Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Londonderry Town Council meeting for November 1st, 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands our nation unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Tonight, let's start thinking about our first responders again. We're going to be going into an unpredictable holiday season, and let's try to keep them all safe. Thank you. Hey, folks, we're going to start off with public comment. I have a few things on my agenda this evening. I have Mr. McDonald here about Braver Angels. Sir.
Hello. Thank you for having me here. I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome.
Here, just put this up. I guess for more for the TV camera, I can show everybody back there. This is what Braver Angels is all about, sort of. Can see that on your thing at home?
There's several cameras around the room.
Oh, okay. Uh-oh, I'm on more than one. All right. Here to speak about Braver Angels, an organization trying to depolarize our country. Very important task, very necessary. If you follow politics at all, you may know that, and I'll aim it towards this camera, but blue is for liberals, red is for conservatives. And instead of beating each other up, let's work together. That's what Braver Angels is trying to do. That's why I wear this all the time. I go to people and they get a little surprised at first, but it's very effective. Need to work together. That's what Braver Angels does. Their mission is to bring Americans together to bridge the partisan divide. Again, work together. That's tearing our country apart. It's a lot easier to just sit on the sidelines and not do anything, but if you sit on the sidelines waiting for somebody else to do it, that somebody else is nobody, and nothing gets done. We really need to get together and get this done. Work together, we can do it. We really can. I'll briefly explain because I don't have a lot of time here. The website is fantastic, has a lot of information on it. And a lot more than I can go into now, I just don't have that time to do that, so. Anyways, one of the things that I wanted to mention too is when you think about this, working together, I know it's easier to sit on the sidelines, but we can't do that anymore. Need to remember what President Kennedy said many years ago. Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. And one of the things that you can do for your country is to join with Braver Angels to help depolarize our country. Very important, very important that we need to do this. Some of the things they do, again, their website is very awesome. It's right on there. Great job they do on that. Very informative, and it's easy to follow. It's really good. One of the things they do is some workshops where people get together, red-blue workshops they call it. It's a small evenly divided group of reds and blues, and you get together for a series of exercises that help clarify disagreements, reduce stressful thinking, and discover common values. And be surprised that people, you know, when you have a chance to talk to somebody and actually listen to them, that you have a lot more in common than you think you do. Too many people today think that, oh, all these guys on the other side, oh, they're all terrible, they're all bad, blah, blah, blah. Now you start talking to them, wow, okay, this guy's pretty cool. That's what we really need to do. So they have the workshops there, red and blue, and then a little more extensive, they go common ground. The red-blue workshops are just get to know each other and talk about various things. The common ground workshops are more of one subject that you really get deeper into and try to come up with solutions that you can pass on to other people, your legislators and things like that. And that's another thing Braver Angels is working on, trying to get members of Congress, their staffs, and on the state level, get those people to all involve with Braver Angels so they can work together again. We had Senator Lindsey Graham of South Carolina and Chuck Schumer of New York. They used to be able to work together. They can't do it anymore. They had, a few years ago, the Gang of Eight, four Republicans and four Democrats got together for immigration reform, and they were able to do that. They can't do that nowadays. So that's what Braver Angels is trying to do, to help them to be able to work together again. But we need to do it as well, too. You can't just sit there on the sidelines and say, well, yeah, I'll let somebody else do it. Again, that somebody else is nobody, and that goes nowhere. So we really have to do that. Let's see. The other things they have in workshops, they have skills training workshops where you learn how to talk across political divide in an instructive and empathetic way. You learn how to approach somebody. If you hear somebody saying, oh, blah, 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 even if they're on your side, you can calmly, and you have the confidence to do this, too. That's where you learn at Braver Angels, the confidence to be able to speak to somebody and say, hey, you know, they're not all that bad. You really can do it. And if, again, if we sit on the sidelines, we're not going to get anywhere. And then family and politics. Thanksgiving's coming up, and isn't that fun? When you're sitting around the table and, eh, politics, you don't want to do that? You don't want to discuss that? Braver Angels can make it again, so you might not feel comfortable bringing it up, but if somebody else does, you can feel comfortable talking about it. Wouldn't that be great to not worry about Thanksgiving and, you know, sitting there at the table and having everybody, wah, 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 wah? You don't have to worry about that. With Braver Angels, we can do that. That's very important. Oh, let's see, what else do we have here? The one-on-one conversations, which I have participated in, my wife has done that as well. You have a red and a blue, and you just talk to each other. They have some very good guidelines about that, and you follow the guidelines, and it's about a one-hour conversation. They encourage you to have two, and you just talk to the other person, and you learn things from their side, and you learn how to listen to people. And they encourage you to extend those to more if you want, but that's up to you. Let's see. Commission there. And they also have debates. It's more of a discussion, not a debate, where people, and they don't have reds and blues, they have pros and cons, they pick a subject, whatever subject is, you know, current events kind of a thing, and they, anybody who signs up for these can get involved. You can either listen and learn, or you can ask questions, or you can even speak if you want, if you feel comfortable doing that. But it's a great way to learn, and it's not like a debate where you're beating each other up and somebody wins or not. That's why I call it more of a discussion than a debate, where you get to learn things. And they, again, we need to volunteer for this. We need to help do this, because they can't do it themselves. And one of the things that they're looking for is online debate chairpersons and event support team members for these debates. They need help in that regard. Again, find out on the Braver Angels website. Okay, and another thing, college debates. They have some very impressive college debates. Lot of things on the website there. I don't really have time to get into that, but one thing that impressed me, at the bottom of the section about college debates, they have participant testimonials. And a lot of the kids and the professors that went through this, they were very impressed, very happy with it, and very glad that they did that. Another thing they offered is corporate offerings, where you depolarize your company. And, you know, places you go to work and you don't dare talk about politics or anything. They have offerings that will take care of that, so people can feel comfortable talking about politics. May not want to bring it up, but if somebody else did, they'd feel comfortable talking about it. And we can get together and be able to work things out. It's just, it's very, very impressive.
So 30 seconds, sir.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was afraid of that, running out of time. Anyways, thank you all very much for the time to speak with you about it, and remember, let's work together, bridge that divide, work together and get things done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next on my agenda for public comment is school pathway funding update with Sandy and Bob.
Hi.
Hey. John, hi.
Good evening, Bob Rimmel, Tuftay Lane from Londonderry Trailways.
Sandra Legu, Two Fiddler's Ridge Road, Londonderry. Good to see you all.
So how can we help?
We just wanted to report to you on the update of the school pathways project that we're trying to pursue. We came here in February, and we said that that was really next on the trailways priority list to be able to complete the school pathway from the kindergarten to the Willshire-Berkshire neighborhood, and we were going to pursue grants and some other sources of funding to see where we're at. I think Sandra can explain a little bit better than myself, our pursuit of what we have done and where we are today.
Yeah, so we said we would come back in October, November, and let you guys know where we were at and where, what the gap was that remained, and, well, we are not coming in here with a pile of cash. Sorry to say. That's what we wanted to come in and tell you. So we were given a name by Kevin, thank you so much, to work with a small company called Littleberry Press that the town has worked with, Grant. They have a division called Grant Select. And it's been a little slow getting kicked off, and we really haven't made any headway yet in that area. And we actually don't have any awards yet to come back and tell you. What was the cost that we estimated the project?
Well, the cost estimate was about $450,000. Back in February, it's probably $400,000, so as we know, inflation has changed a few things, but we've done, we've invested a lot in engineering, over $15,000 in engineering to try to make it more appealing and more affordable, and, you know, we've put a lot of skin in the game, including the grant rider we've paid from Londonderry Trailways.
Yeah, and it basically takes a lot, there's a lot of runway time to bring somebody else up to speed on your project than when you just write grants yourself. So we think that once it kicks off, we may have some luck. We just weren't able to turn anything around from February to now. I don't know, it's like, where did the year go? I don't know. So we don't really have anything to report, but what we did want to ask or mention is that a lot of what we do at Trailways is, well, we knock on doors and ask for sponsorship, and we have our own business connections and people we know and that sort, and people we don't, he'll talk to anybody, literally.
You bet.
Just put Bob on. But we wanted to actually mention, if you have relationships or people or businesses that you guys work with, that you can help us make a contact. You know, we all have people that we know in the community and in the state. There's a lot of great connection to the pathway about recreation, about schools, about neighborhoods, connectivity, walkability. So there's a lot of angles that we could get different companies interested in or different individuals interested in, and so we kind of, and also you have access to a lot of things that are going on that we won't know about, you know, financially. And so we're not going to ask to put something on a warrant article. We discussed that, and we made that decision, right? We said we're not going to do that this year, but we did want to come back and report. It's too big of a gap to do that, to be honest with you. And, you know, we try to be smart about when we do that, and we try to do that as infrequently as possible, but we wanted to throw out there, if you guys have any ideas, connections?
Or questions?
Yes.
Regarding the project. I mean, we even tried to pursue funding from Congressman Pappas, you know, and it just didn't work out. But we've, we're sort of at a dead end here, and we're just asking you for advice, input, questions, and that includes the audience as well. This is for public comment. You know, we're not going to just put our hand out for every project, so.
This particular year is going to, we're going into budgets on Saturday, and, I mean, I'm sure you're, as you're well aware, we took a significant revenue reduction from the power plant, so we're going in with, you know, with tight margins as it is, so. Questions, comments? Yes?
Design question. I know it's early, but as you come out of the kindergarten and go west, you come to the first real, probably expensive part that you get to is that bridge.
That's where it all begins.
That's where the money is.
Yeah.
So does the early design show road cross and cross the bridge on the south side or stay on the north side of the bridge?
The design has always been to stay on the north side of the bridge. The most cost-effective solution that we've come up with to get past the water is just build like a boardwalk type structure. It wouldn't even be eight feet wide, which is the width of the path right now, it's just to get past it. But the whole complication with the wetlands is difficult, it's expensive. We were literally about to expend a fair amount of money just doing boring samples, you know, which is $5,000 to $8,000, and we decided to put that on hold just because we're at a bit of a dead end, but we just don't have a choice to go to the south end at this point. And we've worked very closely with Public Works on this, by the way.
Yeah, Town Public Works. And we would have the same expenditure on the other side as well, because it's still a, you know.
You're going to cross the road at some point.
Right, right in front of Willshire.
Yep.
It's a little safer, there's a little better line of sight there than at the water crossing. Yep, good question, though. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Any rich relatives, any, you know?
Any recent lottery winners here?
Any recent lottery winners?
No.
All right, so I guess I'm left to ask the obvious question. Is this really the best next project? I mean, considering what's involved, and I guess the question would be is, is that the current rail trail that's been, you know, done for you folks has been an overwhelming success? And abundantly used? Would be, you know, considering, sometimes when you have to ask the question, if you're going to invest, do we expect the same level of success with this investment?
I think so, I really do. And you know, the rail trail, we're at a point where the connection to Manchester is funded, and it's just working through its paces, and the connection to Derry is wrapped up in foray. And so, you know, we just went to the latest meeting, several of us on that, and, you know, it's going to get there, there's just nothing for us to do right now on that connection to Derry, unfortunately.
Somebody should ask the question.
Right. So therefore, because the rail, either end of the rail trail is either funded and, funded or held up, this, we believe, is the next best project for us to work on, and I think it will be very successful.
Yes, I believe so.
Because you wrap in another however many hundred homes.
And it's also in front of the school. Yeah.
If we found an anonymous donor, or they wanted to get money to you, how do they do that? Should they contact the town manager, and then what is the best way that you would like to communicate to folks that are maybe watching this that want to give to?
Sure, yeah. You can start by calling Kevin, you know, and he knows how to get in touch with us. We also, on our website as well, londonderritrails.org, there's a way to communicate with us that way. There's a contact us. Thank you for asking, Joe.
Yes.
I see, another thing I would add is that, you know, we have so many businesses in town, some fairly large, and some that have already donated to rail trail, but it's a lot who haven't.
Right.
And perhaps it would be worth having conversations with, just hitting up as many of these as possible, and, I mean, even if you're able to get 5,000 here, 5,000 there, that adds up. Once you hit a critical mass, so I would maybe look at that route as well.
Yes.
I agree.
Yep.
Would, I guess, two questions, one for the town manager, one for you guys. Would we consider advertising sponsorship on the, on that expensive part of going across the bridge, you know, partially donated by, you know, Jim's Pizza Hut, whatever?
Yeah, if you've seen, we've done that on the rail trail for major sponsors, so yeah, I think the bridge area would be nice.
We're always open to, to ideas like that, absolutely.
Yep, for businesses, yep, absolutely.
Yeah, there are a few newer companies in town who are looking to get involved in the community. One of them has 5,000 new members. It's over by Shaw's, and it's purple.
I think I've seen you there.
But yeah, she's, that's actually corporate-owned, that's not a franchise.
That one's corporate-owned?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right.
So I know they're, I know they're very community-oriented, and I think the manager's there, her name is Stacy, and I know they're looking for more involvement in the community.
Interesting. I know it sounds crazy, but I know the owner's at Planet Fitness.
He'll be right on that one.
That can't hurt.
Okay. No, thank you for your time. We just, we said we would come back in October, and so we wanted to come back. We usually come back telling you about.
We're just reporting.
Grant awards, and so this is a little harder for us.
You bet.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item I have is Net Zero Task Force presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joshua Borden. I serve on the Derry Town Council, and I am the founder of the Net Zero Task Force. And this is Jeff Moulton, he is the chairman of the Net Zero Task Force. I got to say, I prefer being up there than over here. It's a little more intimidating over here, but I appreciate.
Her room is much bigger and more intimidating.
Either way. But yeah, I wanted to reach out and kind of let you know where we're at, and give you a little insight. I really appreciate what the gentleman was saying earlier about, you know, coming together, because that's exactly what our bipartisan committee has done. But before I get into what our goal is, I want to take it back to my first year, I'm in my third term, but my first year on the council, that was the year the fire station closed, and we were leaning on you for a time to help out, and that was a political disaster in Derry, as you may remember. People in Derry want lower taxes, but they also want to maintain their services. So I scrambled and tried to come up with a way to maintain services while lowering taxes. And the idea that I borrowed from towns and cities across New England was to create a Net Zero Task Force and set a goal to be net zero by the year 2025. So what we did, and the bipartisan part of it is, you don't necessarily, you don't have to believe in global warming to accomplish net zero. You can simply, it's okay to just want to reduce your taxes, and that's been our focus in Derry. But what we've done is, the key aspect is taking members from each of the most important boards, your planning board, your council, your school board, who else? Your high school, Public Works, like, bring, bring in the experts from all the different boards, so when decisions are made, there's no surprises, and that's really streamlined everything. What else did I want to say? So again, our goal is, in Derry, to become a net zero community by the year 2025. By this time next year, the municipality should have, will have achieved that, then we'll be working with K through eight, and then eventually helping Pinkerton Academy, which ultimately will save millions of dollars for our taxpayers. One of my other goals is to help, to help communities throughout the state to be able to replicate what we're doing. Again, I think a lot of times when people think about net zero and sustainable energy, they try and put it, these communities in a box. Well, it's a liberal community doing that. It really doesn't have to be. It's fiscally conservative, it's fiscally smart to avoid wasting taxpayers' money when we could be utilizing the sun's energy to do that. So I will, the last thing I'll say is, my role was bringing smart people together who know the details, and I was able to convince Jeff, who's an engineer and an expert in solar energy, to take on the committee and be our chairman. So did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I would say the, in addition to the board, other board members, there's five public members, and those are really some very valuable parts of the board, are the group engineers and business people experienced with the, in the energy sectors. So they brought a lot of experience to the table, and the first thing we really did was we went around and collected data. There's 30 town buildings, seven schools, collected all the energy data for the last 10 years, and then benchmarked it against not only other buildings in town, but against buildings across the country using an EPA tool. And that kind of pointed out where all the problems were, what buildings are underperforming. And it was really surprising, some of the data, that some of the newer buildings were the worst performing buildings. And sometimes you get into these complicated HVAC control systems that maybe your staff just doesn't know how to, isn't properly trained, or are not familiar with, but they actually can decrease the performance of the system by just not knowing how to operate it, and some of it was just basic training. But we've implemented over the last six, seven years, about $900,000 per year in energy savings, LED lights, HVAC controls, new HVAC systems, converting from oil to natural gas. We put in a pilot solar field out at the transfer station that saves about $25,000 a year, but it was really used as a, as a kind of a pilot to educate the public and the town council that this works. And we just finished the RFP for our landfill, which is a 2.2 megawatt system, and as Josh indicated, that will completely put the whole town's buildings on renewable energy. And that's going to be saving us about $3.5 million. There's the option in the year six to buy the system, we could save an additional $2 million, but town council will have that option to make that decision six years from now. But we're getting ready to award the project, negotiating the contract right now, and we will be operational by 2023 with that new solar field.
And the thing I forgot to bring forward, you know, why now? Recently, Governor Sununu signed legislation that allowed us to really expand the size of our solar field, so we've been waiting on that legislation. It's always, I've talked to him, you know, it's been a roller coaster emotionally, like, are we going to get there? Are we going to get there? But that legislation is key. And I've been talking to Jeff for, on and off, for years about my goal, being able to get out and across the state, and once this legislation passes, you know, it seemed like the right thing to do. And with you guys being our neighbors, I wanted to, you know, just offer, let you know that we're available to help, offer any advice. Again, the biggest thing, we, the biggest reason for our success is expanding, expanding it, the members to other boards, and not just being solely a group of, you know, energy advocates. Because if you're just energy advocates, your political reach, your decision-making ability may not be as great. Yeah. Any questions on our project, or what you guys, or any questions in general?
Questions? Yes?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming, Josh. When I heard about this project that you've been doing for a long time, I thought it was great, and to see it be so successful, I couldn't wait to invite you guys to come in here, because I think Londonderry can do that. At one time, we were trying to get, I'm not even sure where it stands, an solar company to come in and lease Auburn Road, which was a super fun site, to put in solar energy and, you know, but it wouldn't benefit the town, it would only benefit the company. And so, like, being able to have access to, like, maybe who you guys used, how did it work out? Did, so they supplied that energy back to you? I mean, back to the town, I should say, so that the town's electric bill or schools' municipals' electric bills got dropped because of the solar panels, things like that. I just wanted to learn more, knowing, you know, things are kind of tight in a budget and ways weak as a town. and ways weak as a town can be, as opposed to just cutting, cutting, cutting. You know, look at something different that's positive. Um, so that's why I, I wanted to hear more and understand more.
Well, the RFP that we did for the large landfill solar project had, we asked for two options. One was a direct purchase right up front. Um, and the bits came in around four to five million dollars. And for us, that was about a twelve-year payback on the savings. But then you get another twelve, thirteen years of savings, which equate to around three to four million dollars. Maybe longer if the, the system lasts longer. Uh, but the option we're going with is what they call the PPA, or it's a lease buy. You have the option to buy after six years. Again, it's, if we just lease it for the entire time, it's, it's, that savings is still in the three to four million range. But if we take the option to buy at the end of year six, it, and we add another two million in savings. So the savings increased to five to six million. Now what happened, why is that, does that happen is because the vendor who builds this and owns and operates it is able to take the thirty or twenty-six percent tax credit and then they, they can do accelerated depreciation over five to six years. So then they turn around at the end of six years and they sell it to us at forty cents on the dollar. And that's where that extra two million dollars, uh, savings could potentially come from. But, um, in all cases, every year we're saving money. It starts out around e, seventy, eighty thousand a year and it builds up. We're getting a fixed rate. So that hedges us against, uh, rising energy prices. I think we're all gonna be shocked in the next couple of months whenever source comes out with their new rates. But, uh, we're hoping to hedge against that for the next twenty-five years.
And I think the, a big thing that gets missed or assumed, especially for people at home, um, possibly for you all is you hear that price tag, you hear about a, a timeline down the road and you're, you're thinking, well, how are we paying for that now? And is it gonna cost us money now? Um, and the beauty of this is the energy that's produced each year pays for your bill. So you're at worst breaking even. In Derry with our pilot project, we not only broke even, but we came out ahead. So it's a, for us, it's a no-brainer.
With the lease, there's no upfront costs. They, they incur the hundred percent of the construction costs and they sell us the electricity at a, at a discount. So, um, it's a, it's a very good deal. And the, the prices have gone down significantly over the last two or three years with panels and electronics. So, uh, we, we were looking at about three dollars a watt, um, three years ago and now it's down to a little over two dollars a watt. So.
Joe, any good questions?
Yep, so.
You probably know about thirty, thirty-five years ago, we, we were looking, uh, pretty, pretty strongly at a, an, a trash to energy, uh, project up by exit five where, where our old transfer station was at one time. And, uh, at the time, the technology was such that we would have generated so much ash that, uh, the community eventually rejected it, uh, because they didn't want that much ash in, in, you know, going into the groundwater and going, going around. Has the technology changed significantly over the, over those la, last, let's say, two to three decades? So that you, you collect or, um, manage the ash, uh, uh, in a different manner than, than it was back then?
Derry's not in that business either. Um, they, they export all their, uh, their waste. I don't know where the, uh, the New England site is, but I, I don't know the answer to that.
Are, are you considering a, a, a trash to energy, uh, project as part of your, your, you know, your mission?
Produce energy from trash? Uh, no, we're not.
Right now our focus, really what we try to do is kinda two avenues, low hanging fruit, which is your LED lights and, and things like that. But then also biggest bang for your buck and, um, solar and the public-private partnership seems to be the best option. Again, you save, you save a ton of money right off the bat. As soon as you flip the switch and it's on, you're saving money and there's cost avoidance. Once we achieve that goal, I mean, that's taken us a few years now. And again, if it wasn't for the governor signing that legislation, we're not here tonight. So once we achieve that goal, we'll be looking to, you know, at whatever's next.
Right. So the, the, the new legislation allows us to do net metering up to five megawatts. And we're gonna be buying electricity from this third-party vendor who's building the solar field at around six to seven cents a kilowatt hour. And, you know, the, the cost for kilowatt hour today is probably around sixteen, seventeen cents or more. So it's, it's a pretty good deal.
Significant. And we can also tie in the schools. This legislation allows us to bring the schools into the fold and, um, help bring their costs down too.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions?
Yeah, real quick question. What's the life expectancy of these solar panels today?
The, uh, systems is warranted, the panels, the solar panels, which is the biggest part of the cost, is are warranted for twenty-five years. Um, most of the vendors claim they can get thirty to forty years out of them, but we do our business case around twenty-five. Now there is some electronics, uh, the inverters that take the DC current and convert it into AC. It's, uh, that has a life or a warranty life of twelve years.
And that's the most expensive part.
What we've done in our, uh, business cases, we actually.
Build it in.
Built in some costs for replacement at the end of twelve years to, to.
Yeah, anything we present to the council is the most conservative. Like, we wanna, we wanna hold it up year after year to our constituents and, and show that we're winning. Um, the other, I'm glad you brought that up because the other assumption is, is after twenty-five years, they stop working. They, you know, you might see a hundred percent efficiency for, for decades, but they go on for decades after the twenty-five years. It might be at ninety percent or eighty percent, but they're still working. You're still, you're still saving money.
So, are you interested?
Yes. Yes, very.
I think it's something we should go down. I really do.
Yeah, great.
Can you ask, um, Dave and Mike to dig into this and as well as the programs that we have going on and see where we stand and, um, and talk to these guys?
Absolutely.
Any websites?
Websites, um.
Go ahead.
Um, we have a Facebook page, but, uh, no, we haven't, we haven't, I mean, it's on the town website where we have our agendas and our meeting minutes and things like that. But, uh, I mean, we, it's public information. We, we'd be glad to share anything, our RFPs or business cases.
Quick step, a quick thing, a step that our task force did, um, was we went before the council before, you know, and asked to be legit, if you will, to be, to be voted in. And then the council, uh, voted a resolution to be, uh, you know, set a goal to be net zero by X year. I mean, you, you guys wouldn't be, because of the legislation that was recently signed, it wouldn't be a far stretch to, to set a goal, you know, twenty thirty, twenty twenty-eight, whatever. Um, again, prior to that, it was, we were kinda like.
So we, but in, it was a broad goal.
Yeah.
One, twenty twenty-five, everything's re, a hundred percent renewable. And when we, we looked at it and stated it, we said, it's not feasible. Um, we can do electricity a hundred percent renewable and that will be done by twenty twenty-three. But, uh, converting, uh, heating systems and, and cars and trucks to, uh, all renewable by twenty twenty-five wasn't feasible. So we kinda backed off on part of that and pushed it out to twenty thirty, twenty twenty, thirty-five.
Yeah, we're just focusing on what we can control.
Sure. Yeah, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna ask the town manager, um, talk to Dave at Public Works and with Mike's help. Um, Mike's our town solicitor. And, uh, let's dig into what it means and what the steps are and, you know, we'll come back and revisit it. And perhaps these guys will come back when we do.
Awesome.
Would that be okay?
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks for sharing.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are in public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council tonight under public comment? Seen none. I'm closing public comment. Um, I'm gonna skip around the agenda here a little bit. We have an interview for, uh, Deb DeRosa, uh, later on this evening. I'm gonna skip that up to the front so she doesn't have to stay here through our meeting. So, um, so Debbie, if you wanna come up?
I appreciate that.
You're welcome. So just so you're aware, later on in our meeting, we're gonna accept the resignation of the chairperson of the, uh, of the senior resource committee.
Okay.
So while we may talk tonight, we may take a little time before we make some decisions.
No problem.
So, um, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Debbie DeRosa, she's twenty-five Royal Lane. Um, I've been here in London Derry for ten years, uh, with my husband. I'd like to give back to the community in some way and I was trying to figure out what I could do that would be beneficial for myself also. And, uh, uh, looking at the different opportunities for the different committees, I thought that this one would be really kinda what would focus in for me cause I like to help people. I wanna help the elders here in the town. The, uh, committee kinda seems like it's trying to work things and do different things. And, uh, I think I could have a good voice in, in, uh, helping try to get some stuff done.
Fantastic. For those of you who don't know, um, uh, Deb and her husband do a unbelievable job decorating for whatever holiday it may be. Right now it's Halloween and, uh, as I understand, they do that for their grandchildren. So, you know, you'll be in charge of decorating.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you, if you have the chance during the holidays, take a ride by, they do a great job.
I appreciate that.
Questions? Uh, Tom?
Well, thank you for stepping forward and volunteering. It's, the volunteer workforce in, in the town is really the backbone of, of how we, uh, how we get things done. And, uh, so thank you for stepping forward. I will be supporting you for this position.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jim, any questions?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, what was one deciding factor for you to step up for this?
I've been thinking about it.
Counsel, there was one deciding factor?
Yeah, I just, I think it's the, um, well, obviously I'm getting into the senior years myself. So, um, it just seems like the seniors are kinda the forgotten people. Um, that's the biggest thing for me, you know? They, not a lot of people in that age group now have access to the internet, things like that. They don't know what's available to them out there. Um, it just seems like we could do a better job of getting that information to the people, you know, that really need it. And, um, I don't know how to do that, but maybe being on the committee, I can help in some way to do that.
Thank you.
Joe, thanks for stepping up. Definitely needed.
Appreciate it.
Um, again, thank you. And I, and I have seen your house. I think I've taken pictures of it.
You had it in your paper. Exactly. You did, you did. Made my husband's night, that one. You can find that one.
I guess my question to you is what do you see as the biggest challenge, um, that you would like to take on? Or something, you know, it's gotta be something that you, you know, an agenda, something you'd like to sink your teeth into and say, you know what? I wanna have more senior trips or I want more exercise or seniors in the school. I don't know what your passion is, but what do you feel is something that you'd like to accomplish as a goal, being on this committee?
I'm not too familiar with what the committee actually like, to be honest with you, does because the, um, the web information is a little like not as up to date as it could be. Um, I know they're working on that and everything. I haven't been to the meetings yet. Um, I was gonna go to one, but I guess it got canceled for emergency, um, last week. I'm not really sure what my passion would be on it yet because I don't know what we can do. But I know my thing is that, um, I think just a sense of community that people to do more in the, like, instead of just a senior center where people have to travel there to get there, um, have a little bit more where they can have some fun and not have to go to that one place. Um, they might have different, I, I really don't know off the top of my head what I could, you know, start up or anything, but, um, just to try to get that so it's not just the senior center that people associate with seniors in our town.
Right.
You know?
That's cool. I just, I just think that people need to think about those things and go in there, you know, with new ideas.
Yep, yep.
Thank you again.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for, thanks for coming in. Really appreciate it.
I appreciate you taking me cause I got up early this morning. So I appreciate it.
Well, I, you got the transition now. Halloween's over.
I know. Well, I got the word. I have to take it down Wednesday cause Christmas is going up, so.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Debbie DeRosa for an alternate position on the senior resources committee.
Kirby, is there an alternate position open?
There is, yeah.
Okay.
Second up.
Well, is it favors coming by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair holds affirmative. Uh, Deb, just come in. You see the town clerk and she'll swear you in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, folks, new business. So we're gonna have a discussion about the settlement proposal with, uh, Penetuck on the rate case with, uh, Mike Malaguti.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so, Mike Malaguti, Assistant Town Solicitor. So as this pertains to a matter that, uh, was discussed in a non-public privilege setting, I do need the council to vote to waive the privilege in order for me to proceed.
Roll call vote. Um, we're gonna be voting to waive privilege.
Aye, Joe Green.
Aye, Deb Paul.
Aye, Jim Butler.
Aye, Tom Dolan.
Aye, John Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so it was about a year ago that, uh, the town was notified that Penetuck, uh, the town's water, uh, one of the town's water utilities, uh, was seeking a twenty-one percent increase in total revenue uh, and was planning to file that case with the Public Utilities Commission. At the council's direction, the town, the town hired, uh, she and Finney Bass and Green to represent us in the PUC matter. That firm conducted, uh, discovery, reviewed, uh, Penetuck's materials that it had submitted in support of the, uh, rate, uh, increase and, uh, hired an expert witness to examine the increases, uh, that were proposed and to assist, uh, the attorney in case preparation. Uh, the settlement agreement that's on the table, uh, is not a twenty-one percent increase in total revenue. It is a sixteen and a half percent increase in total revenue. And the reduction, uh, in the increase is based on savings that was identified by the town's expert witness. As you know, on October eighteenth, uh, utility council and the expert witness, uh, met with the town council in a non-public privileged setting, uh, and recommended the settlement agreement that's on the table, uh, for the following reasons. It was noted that, uh, at trial, the town's expert witness will support a nineteen or a twenty percent increase. In other words, after looking at Penetuck's materials and its proposal, the expert witness found, uh, that those increases are mostly justified under the law and under PUC rules. It's important to remember that as a regulated utility, Penetuck is entitled to recover its costs, uh, from rate payers. The expert's reasoning was based on the following factors. Uh, he noted that ninety percent of Penetuck's costs are fixed. There's little flexibility to tinker with those costs in an attempt to chip away at the proposed increase. Uh, these fixed costs rise at a rate faster than inflation. The most widely used measure of inflation is the Consumer Price Index. That's a measure of the cost to acquire consumer goods. That's not applicable here. The cost, uh, that we're talking about is the cost to maintain and improve a public water system. That cost is comprised of production cost, a labor cost, infrastructure costs, taxes, management costs, and reserves that Penetuck needs to maintain, uh, to guard against, uh, drastic, uh, changes in the pricing structure. Penetuck's, uh, structure as a company drives higher rates in general. Our expert told us that Penetuck is comprised of twenty small utility systems spread over a large area and not interconnected. Uh, Penetuck is a nonprofit corporation. It can't issue stock and it needs to maintain those reserves that I referenced in order to avoid the need to issue costly debt. Very significantly, the PUC has already, uh, looked at the methodology that Penetuck is relying on in support of these increases with regard to its sister companies. Uh, and the PUC has approved those methodologies, um, and approved those increases. What that tells us is that the PUC is likely to agree with Penetuck largely here based on that methodology that's already been approved. It should be noted that the Office of Consumer Advocate and the Department of Energy, entities that exist, uh, and function to look after consumer interests, um, have reacted favorably and are in support of this settlement agreement. In closing, uh, while a sixteen percent increase is a bitter pill to swallow, it's our advice, and by our advice, I mean, utility council's advice, the expert witness's advice, town attorney Mike's, Mike Ramsdale's advice, and my advice. the expert witness's advice, Town Attorney Mike Ramsdale's advice, and my advice, that we do need to swallow this bitter pill. It's in nobody's interests but the lawyer's interest to go to trial where the virtually certain result is that we'll lose, which means we'll do worse than the settlement agreement that's on the table. I'm asking for the council to vote to authorize this settlement, as discussed with our Utilities Council on October 18th, and to take all steps necessary to do the same.
So some things were discussed during the privileged meeting. Some of the questions that came up were, you know, as far as looking backwards. So I discussed that with Attorney Ramsdale, very disheartened with the answer that I got. But it made sense, is that the Public Utilities Commission, which the commissioners are paid approximately $120,000 a year, that these rates were approved in the past by the PUC. So he felt that we really wouldn't have standing going backwards because they were approved by the PUC. Even if they were wrong, they were approved. I am somewhat disheartened by that. You know, through the conversations with Attorney Malaguti, I discovered the same things. Our relationship with Penetuck is, I don't know. It's been trying over the years, I guess is the best way to put it. The increases that we've taken on, you know, fire systems and everything else, you know, come across, you know, unexplained. While at the same time, as we look for resolutions around the whole PFOA piece, and as you, if you've been involved with it for years, you'll find that Penetuck with the Merrimack Water System and Manchester Water Works have all been involved in trying to come up with a resolution, yet we're no closer today. So there's a lot of frustration around this. The other thing I learned through this was, and I also spoke to the attorney at Shein Finney, is that we'd be looking at tens of thousands of dollars in attorney's fees to pursue this with the recommendation of our expert and our own two attorneys telling us that it's likely that we would fail. With that all said, I leave it to you with what you'd like to do. Discussion.
I think that was a great quote to say, hard pill to swallow, because I think in that non-public, I think that's exactly what we all talked about. And just, we just said, it can't be, it can't be. And we asked a lot of questions, and it's nothing that I, I mean, it's kind of like a monopoly. I mean, we really can't do a lot, and even if we pushed it, it sounds like it would cost us a lot more money, and that would be pushed to the taxpayers. So net-net, I think this is the best deal that we could strike up.
I agree with Joe. Net-net, there is some savings, hard pill to swallow though.
I just want to say that I agree with everybody, but I hope we take some better steps moving forward to maybe leverage ourselves a little bit better with them, or smarter. That's my two cents on it, moving forward. Keep a, more of a watchful eye on what they're doing and how they're doing it. But unfortunately, I agree with everybody here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I looked at this request for a cost increase, a substantial cost increase to the rate payers, I still can't come to grips with it being justified. And I think, unfortunately, because we already know that the costs we pay for our hydrants are through the roof, that we've been fighting for a long time. And I think that with all the problems we're experiencing right now with water quality, with the PFOS and so forth, I think the timing of this, at best, is Penetuck being tone deaf as the problems that we're experiencing in Londonderry. I won't characterize it worse than that, although I'd like to. But let's just say, I think they're being tone deaf, that we have to go through the problems that we're experiencing right now, and then to layer on top of that, in my view, an outrageous rate increase is unjustified.
What do you call this? You know, damned if we do and we damned if we don't. So what do you want to do? Are we going to accept the offer?
Make a motion to accept the offer.
Second.
What was in favor, excuse me, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. No.
Opposed?
No.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next item, discussion on the 2021 tax rate. Before we leave this, really want to see us come up with a better way to, I know we've sat down with the leadership team at Penetuck in the past, and we've had very candid conversations with them. I do believe Counselor Dolan is right. I don't think they hear us. I don't know if the right expression is, we need to get louder. But we need to have another conversation with that leadership team.
We also have to try to figure a way of moving away from them, if it's possible. And I know there's a lot of crazy things to even say in that. But I think part of the things that we've been looking into are going to produce options, so I hope that.
Agreed.
Mr. Chair, could I recommend perhaps we bring them into a council meeting?
Oh, that would be great. Let's see if they'll attend.
I'll make a note of that.
Thank you. So, all right, so we have a discussion on the 2021 tax rate. So there, as you know, we're going into budgets, but we always have to set the tax rate so that we can send out the tax bills. As most of you have probably already figured out, the tax bills haven't gone out yet. And once the rate is set, which will probably, once the paperwork that we sign this weekend, is that all completed and sent up to the state?
I am missing one signature.
Whose?
I only have two. I need at least three.
So you were sending an email?
I also have it.
I signed it.
If you have it here tonight, we'll get it.
I have it here.
I signed it, right?
Good.
No. You opened it, but you didn't, I'm wondering if you didn't click finish?
Yeah, we'll sign it.
I've done plenty of times, but I have it here.
Have it right now?
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Sorry, I thought I did it.
No worries.
Bring it here, that way we can get it off and.
So we'll sign it now.
If you had just called me, I would have came down and did it.
Oh, I wasn't sure if you had questions, so I didn't want to, didn't want to push a good question.
When you receive an email and DocuSign, you got to go all the way through. You got to tell them it's finished.
I did. It said, "Thank you."
Well, then, maybe it just didn't respond. I don't know what to say.
I've had that same issue when I'm signing things, where I'll get a call saying, "Hey, how come you didn't sign it?" And I did.
Usually when everyone's done, I get an email saying everyone's done. And, you know.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
It's okay.
That's why I brought it tonight. That way we can, I can send it off tomorrow morning.
So what's going to happen is this is going to go forward to the state, so they can set the tax rate for the December bill. I'm guessing it's going to take at least a week for DRA to turn around, if not more, which means that the tax bills probably aren't going to go out until right before Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving, and that they're going to be due right before Christmas, which is all very unpleasant. So.
With that?
So as much as it's terrible that it's going out before Christmas, you are getting an additional couple of weeks to be able to pay it compared to when it was being paid before.
I understand.
Just trying to look at the positive, be a little, there's a lot of negative in the world.
Yeah, everyone's always positive about taxes. So anyway, we're going into this knowing that we're going into budgets. All of you know that this budget season will be as most are, that we will be examining where we're going and what we need to do. Part of this is also is, understand when we set the tax rate, we're setting the tax rate for school and town. We operate a separate forms of government. 74% of the money that is paid in property taxes goes to the schools. 23% goes to the town. And the remainder of that goes to the county. So just keep all that in mind as we're going forward, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this evening, what we're going to be talking about is solely the town portion of the tax rate. We're not talking about the school, the county, or the state. As you mentioned, it's actually the state DRA that will set the tax rate. But we send them all of the raw data so that they can come up with that number, and we can pretty accurately predict what that number is. As we talk about this evening, just want to provide some historical context here. So the current tax rate for the town is $4.66. The things that go into making up the tax rate every year first is the town budget that's voted and approved in March, along with the Warren articles. I will tell you that of all of the variables affecting the tax rate this year, this one probably has the most minimal effect on what the rate actually is, as the operating budget only increased by 1.46% over last year's budget. As Attorney Malaguti noted earlier, inflation has been much higher than this. The CPI is 5.4%. And again, our operating budget that was approved went up 1.46%. So keep that in mind as we're talking towards what the rate actually is. The second variable, of course, are the revenues. We've been fortunate in that revenue estimates have come in higher than what we anticipated and budgeted for back when we did our budget back in March. Motor vehicle registrations continued to be significantly higher year over year, which is a great thing. We've also, the state revenues and highway and rooms and meals did not bottom out as we maybe had thought they might due to COVID. They've actually stayed rather steady. If anything, they've increased on the rooms and mail side. And we've also had some unanticipated revenues come in, such as a health insurance refund that will be going towards this year's tax rate, as well as monies that won't be used that were appropriated. You may recall that we had a Warren article that was appropriating $250,000 for the water line at Lancaster. Because of the grants that we received, we now will not need to use that money, and so there'll be an offsetting revenue of $250,000. So that will not go down as an appropriation. So that's good news on the revenue side. The most important thing this year has been the townwide valuation. And I very rarely if ever speak in hyperbole, and I don't plan to do so this evening, but I'm not going to mince words either. This tax year had the makings of being catastrophic in terms of property taxes because of a number of things that happened on the valuation side. First of all, we went through a revaluation here. Why did we do that? Because we have to stay over 90%, and home values, property values in this town, and frankly, in all of Southern New Hampshire, are the highest anyone's ever seen them. We got down to 92% in 2020, and certainly if we didn't do a revale, we definitely bordered on going below that 90% equalization ratio. And so we did the revaluation. The news there is that, as most people probably are aware, home values have gone up at a faster pace than commercial and industrial values. All you have to do is open the Union Leader up every Friday, look at the land transfers, the property sales, and you can see what home values have done here in Londonderry. The good news of that is people in Londonderry have more equity in their homes than they've ever had before in any time in the town's history. The opposite would be people having mortgages that are more than what their home values are worth, which certainly is no place you want to be in, and things were like that just 12 years ago. But today, it's significantly different. People have a lot of equity in their homes. Home values are very high. That being said, they did go up at a higher pace, as I mentioned, than commercial and industrial values did. The second issue, and probably the largest issue impacting taxes this year, is that we did lose $135 million from the Granite Ridge settlement with the power plant. And that is a permanent loss until we renegotiate that contract in a few years. And hopefully, the price of natural gas starts going up again, which will make their profits go up, which makes their value go up. But for now, we did lose $135 million. On top of that, we also owe Granite Ridge money for the next five years because of the abatements from previous years. And so we owe them $1.7 million in an abatement from past taxes that are owed. So again, I don't mean to sound like Chicken Little when I say this. This could have been cataclysmic. But when you lose that much in value from your largest taxpayer, you know, that's 4% of the tax base, as well as owing them $1.7 million on top of a revaluation, things looked pretty dire. That being said, it's not going to be as bad as it sounds, and I'll explain why. First of all, I have to credit the Finance Department. I think we've, we have fiscally managed our money very responsibly over the last few years to plan for something like this. Let's talk about the abatement payments first to Granite Ridge. If we did not put monies away from previous surpluses that we've had, that money would have been, had to have been raised through taxation this year, 1.7 million. The good news is that last year, we put away $1 million to start planning for something like this possibly happening. This year, at the end of the fiscal year, June 30, because of the budget freezes that we put in place, we had a surplus of $2.3 million. And what did we do with that? We put approximately $600,000 away to pay for the first year of the $1.7 million payment. We took the remaining $1.7 million and put that away for next year. So we already have next year's payment, the abatement payment to Granite Ridge. So that will not also have to be raised through taxation next year. So while no monies got added to our fund balance bottom line, we did put those monies away to pay for the abatement payments coming up. Secondly, speaking of fund balance, we do still have a balance of about five point.
Stop for one second?
Sure, yes.
Just want to make sure that everyone understands, the town is, the town side of government is paying the abatement. When we draw in taxes, three quarters of that goes to supporting our educational system. The school is not paying the abatement. It's being paid by the town, municipality, that side of the balance sheet. It is one pair of pants and two pockets, but that's where the money's coming from, just so that everybody understands.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's a good clarification. I'm glad you added that. Secondly, as I mentioned, we do have $5.3 million in our fund balance account right now. And what the Finance Director and I are proposing to do this evening is to use $1 million from that fund balance to also put towards the tax rate this year, again, as an offsetting revenue. Now, 200,000 of that is from the Taxpayer Relief Act that this council passed a couple of years ago. And then the remaining 800,000 would just be from UFB. All of it comes from UFB, but it equals $1 million. What that would do is it would give us a town tax rate of $4.20. Now again, the current rate is $4.66. So on its face, it sounds like everyone would be getting a tax decrease because of that. The reality is, some people will get a decrease, some people will get a modest increase. Why is that? Again, because of the revaluation, not every house is the same. You basically have 10 categories of homes. There's ranches, there's colonials, there's condexes, condos, over 55. All of these have different valuations, and they all fluctuate differently depending on what the market is. And so depending on what the percentage was of the revaluation of your home, depending on the style of home you had, will determine whether or not you get an increase or a decrease in your taxes. If we did nothing, if the town had no money to pay for the abatement, and the town had no money to put towards an offsetting revenue, you'd be looking at a tax rate on the town side of $4.80, up from $4.66. And that would be on top of what everyone's revaluation was. So this is when I say, because of really good financial planning, this is a 60 cent swing in the tax rate on the town side. The reason I would not recommend today putting more than $1 million towards this, number one, this draws down our fund balance to really its lowest levels in probably 10 years. Number two, I'm hoping the Granite Ridge issue is the biggest issue we see in the foreseeable future, but you never know. And it's good to have those reserve funds there in case, at the end of next fiscal year, let's say we don't have. let's say we don't have as large a surplus. We still want to pay that abatement through surplus funds, through fund balance, and not have to raise it through taxation. And so that's why I'd recommend not using more than $1 million. Again, and I would mention too, that the $4.20 tax rate, I went back and looked in records. It appears to be the lowest rate the town's had in 40 years. My books only go back to the 1970s, but the lowest rate prior to this was $4.38, which is about 12 years ago after the power plant went online. So this would be lower than when it was during the time of the power plant. If you go back in the 70s, it's up in the $5 and $6 range. So it's not insignificant that during a time when we could have been in a whole lot of trouble, we're able to mitigate it, I think, fairly well. And so that's what I would recommend to the council. Justin, I don't know if you have anything else you wanted to add to that.
Yeah, one additional thing is, as we're going into budgets here in November 6th, I know motor vehicle's been going up. If you go to get a rental car anywhere, you'll notice there's very few of them on the lots. They can't seem to acquire inventory. So, and they're telling us this, if you read the Wall Street Journal and you put any vested interest in that, they're telling us this is going to be a year before this turns. So I would say to you, if you're bringing us motor vehicle revenue and increasing it, I would caution you that that might be a long discussion on Saturday.
So I'll have the paperwork ready for that. I don't do that lightly. What I do is I take a three, five, and 10-year average of what's been going on. And we have finally hit a mark where I felt we can comfortably increase it based on the three and five-year average. It's not based on, oh, last year went up a good amount, let's boost it up. I've had people call and yell at me saying that I should. I don't agree with that. I think it's an average because at the end of the day, if you buy a new car today, you don't need another car for five, 10 years. That car doesn't increase each time you come in, so the amount of revenue we receive goes down. So I took the three, five, and 10-year average and determined at that point whether or not we could go up. Once we hit that threshold, that's when I recommended that we increase it a little bit.
We'll see. We may have a blip.
Yes, we can mark it down for next year if we need to. That's perfectly fine.
Yeah, just bringing it up so that we can talk about it on Saturday, yes.
Kevin and Justin, you probably recall not too long ago, the DRA spreadsheet that we had to fill in had a weak point in it that failed to calculate the total rate all the way to the end. And we ended up having to do a makeup payment. I just want to double check. I know that's, that's get everybody on alert, but I just wanted to make sure that we double and triple check the DRA spreadsheets because it won't, it won't make the taxpayers feel any better if we could come back and say, well, DRA made a mistake, but we still have to collect some more taxes. So let's make sure that that's.
So to answer your question, I believe you're talking about when the TIF was not included.
Right.
You didn't calculate the TIF. We did double check that this year because we do have one TIF, but it doesn't have any buildings on it, so the value difference was negligible. That being said, I do want to just point out, when that did happen, we actually didn't go and collect more from the taxpayers. We used money that we had in reserves to make up for that.
Right.
So I just wanted to clarify that point because, again, because of good financial planning, we didn't have to go back to the taxpayers and collect that money.
And by the way, that was all funded by the town.
That's correct. It was. 600,000.
So, I'm sorry, Justin, to interrupt you.
No, I think Kevin summed it up pretty well.
Okay, questions?
Did say the lowest rate in 40 years was there, right?
It could be more than that. I could only go back 40 years.
Yeah, the only problem is his houses were worth $10,000 then. You know, I love this tax rate discussion, you know? It's happened for years here. Okay, I guess, let's see what the state comes back with. And is everybody on board with the $1 million from the undesignated fund balance to offset the tax rate?
Yes.
So one thing I did want to touch on, since these forms have not been submitted to the state, we don't have the state revenues. They give those to us. We have a very solid estimate. But I just wanted to make that clear, that this is based on what our estimates are believed to be.
That's understood. So when it's 418, we'll be happy.
Could be.
Okay. Anything further? Thank you.
All right.
The next two items are resolutions 24 and 25. These are first readings.
So Steve will, Steve Hamilton will come in during the public hearing and speak to the council about this. But what this does is it's updating our, because of the revaluation process, there were some elderly and disabled folks who were not receiving tax bills prior, who will now be receiving tax bills because of the income threshold being where it's at and what the valuation went up to. So this would change those limits so that those folks who were not previously receiving a tax bill will continue not to receive a tax bill.
Jim, do we need a motion to waive the first reading, or?
I'll take a motion to waive readings 24 and 25.
So move.
Second.
Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, readings are waived. Resolution 2021-26, relative to the acceptance of unanticipated revenue.
So the Arts Council, this one is one we accepted last year as well. They were able to go back and get additional funding for this upcoming cycle of concerts on the Common.
And that's?
It's for 5,100.
Make a motion to accept the unanticipated revenue?
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, Justin. Okay. I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes for October 18th as presented in our packet.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resignation of Robert Palmer from the Senior Resources Committee.
Second.
Mr. Palmer, thank you very much for your service. I understand there were some family things and he had to step aside. That required more of his time than he expected. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, sir. Liaison reports. Anything new on the liaison fronts? I did speak with Ted Kitchens at the airport. And once the mayoral race is completed, he's going to arrange for me as the liaison and Kevin as the town manager with Mr. Kitchens to go have a conversation with whomever the victor is. And we will, you know, just take it from there. Town manager report.
The only thing I have is I just wanted to give a special thanks to the town employees who got into the Halloween spirit last Friday. And if you had seen this room a couple of days ago, you would not have recognized it. They made it into a trick-or-treating maze for a lot of youngsters who came through, as well as, well did the town clerks, and received a lot of positive feedback on it. But it was a nice thing to do for the community.
Fantastic.
We still have the ship.
The ship still remains.
Ship is sailed.
All right, media. Assistant Town Manager's report.
I have no report, but, Mr. Chair, would you like to discuss the appointment to the CART Advisory Board? I think it needs to be formalized in order for us to have a third voting member.
So I have an email from Art Rug about the CART membership. Currently, Londonderry has two members on the CART Board of Directors, Nancy Michaels and myself. With the 2020 US sentence, Londonderry has a population of 25,826. That gives us an additional CART member for being over 25,000 by their bylaws. Ms. Drebek has been attending the CART meetings and is on their emailing list. She has indicated to me that she is interested in filling the position. Most towns in CART have a member of staff on the CART Board of Directors for good continuity and communication. She has shown good interest in CART and certainly would be a great asset for CART to have. The current CART bylaws do not indicate any length of term. And I believe what she expressed to me earlier is that it would make her a voting member and give us more of a say in CART. So with the council's indulgence, as this was not on the agenda, I'd like to, do I need a motion to appoint? I'd like to ask someone to make a motion to appoint Lisa Drebek to CART.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, so our next meeting is, is there anything else from anybody? Our next meeting is November 6th at 8:00 AM. The goal here is going to be to be done by noon time, since I've been informed that the town manager, who is also the voice of the Lancers, has to announce a game at 1 o'clock against Pinkerton. So we're going to try to see, do our best to try to be done that day by noon. The next council meeting after that is going to be the 22nd of November. That's the Thanksgiving week. And then, just so everyone is aware, we'll probably be meeting at least the 6th of December around budgets, possibly the 13th, depending, no, excuse me. We'll be meeting at least on the 29th of November, which is the Monday right after Thanksgiving, the 6th of December. Hold the 13th, that date we may not need. And we will have to meet on the 20th to meet all the state regulations. So just so you can have a view into the next five weeks around budgets. Without anything further?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. On Saturday, it's a workshop. Does that mean residents can attend and ask questions? Or they can just sit and observe just to ask the question?
So what we've tried to do in the past is, is let the Budget Committee and the Town Council really question the department heads and work that way. There are public hearings for those, for those things where they want to come and speak to. That's what we've done in the past. If you want to do something different, it's up to us.
I think, my opinion is we have the public hearings scheduled and not confuse it with workshops.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
No, understand, it's a good question. Yes.
I just want to let everyone know that January 11th, Tuesday, January 11th, is the final day to submit citizens' petitions. So citizens are aware.
Tuesday, January 11th. Is that for all governments, or is that just for us?
I can't speak 100% certainty. I believe it's for all governments, but I know for a fact it is for us. It's the second Tuesday of January is the deadline.
Thank you. One thing I did neglect to mention during the presentation about the tax rate is, is for this year, probably as the school board liaison, I have attended more school board meetings than I would care to remember. And that's not a bad thing. It just happens to be how things worked out this year. During those meetings, the Chief Financial Officer of their organization did commit on more than one occasion that they will be releasing $1 million from their undesignated fund balance to help offset the tax rate as well this year. I think it was, I think they might have been talking about 1.3 million? Yeah, I think that's what he says was more than $1 million. And he has committed to that on more than one occasion, and maybe three or four over the past several months. All right, with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are adjourned.